Five items on the agenda. The council was still in session, but I was excused to come up and start the meeting. Let me apologize that we're well over an hour late on this meeting. But we will get started and move forward on the items. If we could start with item one.
Item number one is the CLA and CAO report relative to determination of an appropriate dollar amount for each neighborhood council to contribute toward conducting the 2012 neighborhood council elections.
Let me ask, just if those who are not familiar with the process, if you have cards that you'd like to give us so we can -- because I like to start the cards first before we get into the report. On item one, we have Robert Gelfen and also we have Mike O'Gara. Could both of you come up at this time? This is on item one.
Thank you for your courtesy. I'm Robert Gelfen. I'm this year's Chair of the Los Angeles Neighborhood Council Coalition. We actually sent out our first action alert over the weekend over item one largely because we were kind of wandering around in the dark, wondering what the number was going to be. We had no idea whether we were going to be asked to reduce our budgets by $10,000 or by $10, and we had essentially three days' notice on this. We did receive a lot of responses. I apologize to Mr. Williams if he received very many of them. One of them said, "No, my neighborhood council's pretty useless and cut its money to zero." But the rest of them, a couple of dozen or more, said, "Please don't mess with our budgets anymore. Leave them alone." We sort of felt that there was a deal that had already been done. The other thing I want to say was of a more general nature, which is that we have been in this for, what, almost 12 years now? We started in the year 2000. My Neighborhood Council, Coastal San Peter, was certified at the end of 2001. And what we've faced is a city government that keeps changing its mind. And we've had numerous different ways of elections being run. We spent the first couple of years without any funding at all. And so we find that we sort of have to come running every year or twice a year or three times a year because we are defending our budget over some question every single year. We are defending our right even to have an election, which we should never have had to have that fight. I've signed up for the second item on the agenda, so I'll stop now. Thank you very much.
And this is Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
Let me just comment on a couple of comments you made. First of all, I think in dealing with the city, I don't think any of us, any of the 40 general managers or anyone, including council members, are guaranteed a budget each year. So things do change. And depending on the financial situation within the city, there's going to be decisions made on how funding priorities are going to be held. The other thing I would suggest that rather than -- and we've seen this a couple of times since I've been in this committee -- rather than sending out these blast alerts like the world's coming to an end, you just have to call my office and we'll explain to you whatever we're doing. And you won't have to e-blast and then find out later you alerted people unnecessarily. So that's what we'll give you as one of the things. You can call us. We're glad to talk with you, explain to you what we're doing. And clearly, what we see on some of the emails is people begin to speculate what's going on as opposed to just asking point-blank what the question is.
Yeah. Might I respond briefly? We have never done this kind of email alert before.
I'm just saying, you don't have to do it in the future. If you call the office, we'll resolve that issue.
Yeah. The problem was, we became aware of this on a Friday for a meeting on a Tuesday.
Well, let me just say this. For those who have followed this committee since I've been here?
I do understand.
We've been talking about this item for several weeks to months. We've given people a verbal on moving this forward. It's been a part of agenda and continued for the last three meetings. And we've only had meetings once a month generally. So for those who follow this committee, they would not have had a two-day notice.
Okay? We do understand.
Hi. My name is Mike O'Gara. I've lived in Sun Valley since 1974, and I describe myself as a neighborhood advocate. This attempt to levy a poll tax on elections is an outrageous, undemocratic undertaking that's extremely dangerous. The City Council complains when neighborhood councils do not do enough outreach. And this is the biggest outreach neighborhood councils do each year. Now some members of the City Council want to stifle us and dictate how we spend our money. This is against where our country stands, what our country stands for. This undermines the right of peoples to elect their own representatives. How much unspent money was turned back to the city from neighborhood councils which had not spent all their allocation last year? Find your money in those funds. The neighborhood councils are acknowledged to be the best bargain in Los Angeles. They clean up streets. They remove and clean up urban blight that the city never gets to. They purchase equipment for the fire departments and the police departments. They financially support the wrecked parks. They support school programs. I really view this as a misguided effort by some members of the City Council who wish to weaken the neighborhood council movement and keep stakeholders from having a say in government. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
My name is Doug Fitzsimmons. I'm President of the South Robertson Neighborhoods Council. My Neighborhood Council is incredibly committed to having an election or a selection this year. We feel it's critical to the legitimacy of not only our NC, but the NC program as a whole, to have elections. And so basically, we'll do anything that we have to to make elections happen. However, we also look beyond that. We look to our effectiveness within the community, our ability to communicate our stakeholders' wishes and interests back to the city, as well as to help nurture leadership within South Robertson. Reducing our budgets any further seriously would seriously undercut our effectiveness, our legitimacy. And to single out the NCs, to have to pay the entire burden of their elections would be a grave disservice not only to our NC, but to the entire system. Thank you.
Is that the recommendation?
My recommendation would...
No, I said, is that the recommendation to have you pay for the entire election?
I understand that that is a possibility at this point. But whether that's the final recommendation of this committee or not is still, I understand, up for debate.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have Mr. Engler here. Mitch, if you could just hold on for a minute, let us get item one and two out of here, and then we'll get to your two items. Okay, we can have on item two. Dealing, we've got two speakers, Mr. Gelf, Far, and also Mr. O'Gara.
Let us begin.
Yeah. You want to come on item two?
Item number two is a report from the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment relative to its implementation and expenditure plan to conduct the 2012 neighborhood council elections and expand funds authorized on the department's fiscal year 2012-13 proposed budget for the elections.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Robert Gelfen, once again.
And Mr. Mayor, O'Gara?
I'm sorry to waste my time, because I thought this was...
Okay.
Yeah. I know the danger of repeating myself. Let me do this real quickly. We have been dealing with an inconstant city government. The comments about all agencies having to deal with the budget every year, I do understand that. I think that what's been going on with the neighborhood councils is it's sort of analogous to what happened with the Department of Cultural Affairs a few years ago, and the budget kept getting cutting and cutting and cutting because we don't carry, you know, children out of burning buildings or drive ambulances. We do understand that. We would just like to have some stability where we don't have to keep worrying about it and fighting about it. You know, let's come up with some number for a budget and adopt it essentially by gentleman's agreement for the next four years. That's what I intend to be saying to the candidates in the next election at all levels. The other part is the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. I don't know that Dunn really needs to be running elections. I know that the city clerk should not be running our elections. When the question first came up, they put so many conditions on it. It should have been turned down immediately. It was a big mistake. But at the same time, I don't think that we need Big Brother. I think that the IEA system worked fine before that. Certainly in the Harbor area, the NO system worked fine. We ran our own elections. We tended to help neighbor councils counting their votes and running their elections. It worked fine. We didn't need all these problems that were actually put upon us by the city. And my view over the years is every time the city has tried to fix a problem, they make it worse. And, you know, again, I appreciate your invitation to pick up the phone and call your staff. I hope to have that conversation in a little less time.
You say you're from the Harbor?
I'm from, yes, Coastal San Peter Neighborhood Council.
Did you participate in the survey that was done by the city clerk?
You know, my neighborhood council looked at that survey, and we reported back that we felt that it was a really badly written survey. It was more like a push-pull. We actually did pass a motion somewhat to that effect. We certainly are not in favor of the clerk running our elections ever again. They didn't do a bad job in terms of handing out ballots, collecting ballots, and counting ballots, although they took two weeks to count ballots, which should have taken a half an hour.
One thing I would suggest, if there's surveys in the future, some of your input might be valuable as we're creating what the future of neighborhood councils so that we can have each neighborhood council participate. And I understand that many neighborhood councils in the Harbor chose not to participate, which means we didn't get any of your input. So then you allow other people to speak for you.
You know, I believe that we did provide input, and we did it by, you know, by motion and resolution and so on. It's just the survey was actually available online, was it not? And many of us actually did participate in it, but we did as individuals.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we have staff come up on items one and two? We have an item one, a joint CAO/CLA report dealing with the funding issue.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Lila Pucho with the CAO. Before you is the joint report from the CAO/CLE relative to the NC election plan and an appropriate contribution amount by each neighborhood council to offset the 2012 election cycle. We reviewed the department's NC election reports included as attachments one, two, and three of this report, and we worked with the department to evaluate an appropriate cost associated to the 2012 elections. The 2012-13 adopted budget provides $550,696 for the department to administer the 2012 elections on a temporary basis. On July 3rd, council adopted a motion authorizing the department to have as-needed authority positions to assist with the election cycle. NC elections are scheduled to begin in August and will be conducted on a regional basis consisting of 12 regions. There will be an independent election administrator overseeing each of the 12 regions, and poll managers and assistants to assist with the elections. Attachment four in this report has the up-to-date information with a date, time, location, and type of election, either selection, election, or board affirmation for each of the neighborhood councils. This information is subject to change and can be found on the department's website 20 days prior to the actual election. The department reports that the cost to administer selections is significantly lower than the election process. A selection will consist of department staff, of a senior project coordinator to oversee the bylaw changes and selection approval process. A board affirmation requires the use of department staff and IEAs to meet and to call the first meeting and affirm the board. The department also updates the bylaws and election procedures, stipulation worksheets for any board affirmations. The election process will require the use of an IEA, poll assistant, and poll managers. IEAs will serve as an independent party to oversee the implementation of each election. The department plans to use arbiters for the any-election challenges. The department prepares and prints election manuals and various forms for all three methods. The cost for translation services is estimated at $100,000 and is proposed to be shared between the department and neighborhood councils. It should be noted that the department authorized neighborhood councils to encumber a part of their 2011-12 annual appropriation for outreach activities as it relates to the upcoming 2012 elections. In June, the department reported this amount as $278,000. On June 22nd, the department reported this amount to be $352,000, and as of July 17th, this encumbrance amount, only as it pertains to outreach, is now at $450,000. This is a significant increase from the department's initial report of $278,000. We do have a recommendation in this report for the department to report back with an analysis.
Could you give us some idea on what is considered outreach when we talk about the $400,000?
I did provide attachment number six, which is provided by the department and lists some of the activities that NCs encumbered specifically for outreach, such as Staples, Office Depot, Lowe's, Target, Walmart, Little Caesar's Pizza, Domino's Pizza, Yum-Yum Donuts. It's approximately 11 pages, and that particular amount was the $352,000.
Do we have, when you say outreach, media or access in the sense of attracting people to the meetings? We have, once they get there, I understand that they feed them, but do we have anything that lists the type of things that are attracting people to meetings?
There's printing costs in here. There's various printing and walking man, I believe, which is used for distribution of materials. But the list is very long, and it's with various activities, party rentals, markets.
Let me ask the department, on your evaluation of these lists that have come in, is it your sense that these are appropriate allocations and that they've been encumbered properly?
Councilman, Bong Ryeon Kim, General Manager, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. This is the first time that we've done this, given the timing of the elections and neighborhood councils wanting to use last year's funds. So in that respect, it's a kind of pilot. But what we've done is work with the controller to basically establish a bottom line in terms of what they would feel comfortable authorizing the use of funds just for the encumbrance purpose. What we will do now is examine all the requests that are coming in for elections outreach and determine on a case-by-case basis whether we feel it's appropriate. I wanted to be sure that we allow neighborhood councils as much flexibility to be creative. So some neighborhood councils, for example, have come together as a region and taken out full-page ads in the Daily News. So those are some of the best practices. Some are actually getting together and buying radio ads. Some neighborhood councils are organizing festivals to get people to just come out and then introduce neighborhood councils that way. So there are a number of, quite a few neighborhood councils who are getting it in terms of trying to use this as a fun activity, not just, you know, something that they have to do, which I think is a really good strategy to get people to be involved. But I think we won't really know until after we see how the neighborhood councils approach it, and then we will come back with the report to tell you, these are the creative ways in which neighborhood councils have done outreach, and then these are the ways that we didn't think qualified as elections outreach.
Mr. Chair, Paul Smith, CLA's office. I think one of the fears we have is, last year, the year before, the council eliminated the rollover policy. The encumbrance policy seems to be morphing into a way of avoiding, of using the rollover in the guise of an encumbrance. It would appear appropriate that, working with the department, that some guidelines be established, which would give some guidance to the NCs as to what are appropriate expenditures as an encumbrance, such as some things that are bound by a contract and agreement, a lease, a fee structure of some sort, some way where you have an obligation which you're bound to pay. These, this listing has activity items in there that are not associated with a lease. It's associated with a future appropriation for an activity. Ostensibly for this one, it would be for election purposes, for outreach. I think we need to work with the department and try to structure this in a way that we are not avoiding, using the encumbrance process as a rollover process. And I think we need to develop, again, a structure that would assist them and...
One thing I was going to ask you on the technicalities of it is that if you have these funds encumbered for outreach, if they're not totally expended, do they get swept? Or where do those funds go?
Part of the recommendation, and I think in conversations with your office, is that the department does not have a clear way of reporting what was encumbered and not expended in those encumbrances. Just to give you an example, last year was the first year that they implemented an encumbrance policy in general. To this date, I have yet to receive of the encumbrance amount that year, last year, how much has been expended and how much is remaining, so we could possibly use those funds for other purposes. We need to develop some sort of reporting tool and hold the department accountable, whether it's every month or every quarter, on how much neighborhood councils are expending of existing funds and prior-year encumbrances. And that, right now, does not exist.
Aren't those considerations involved in whether the 12-13 funding is allocated? That you're getting a clear record of what was fit, how it was fit, what was encumbered?
When we do the budget, the proposed, we basically rely on the department to tell us how much is remaining in the NC fund, the 44B fund, which has the $5 million roughly for all neighborhood councils. The department normally tells us what's left, and we offset that amount with a general fund appropriation for next year. And this particularly, the department reported that NCs will expend all of their funds. So at the end of the year, the balance was expected to be zero. Now, in June, they had a deadline where all NCs were supposed to finalize their demand warrants and send in their encumbrances. When they submit that report to us, because it's after the time we prepare the budget, we can only modify the budget for the next year, which by then, we won't know this amount. We don't have a clear-cut way of how the department keeps track. Maybe if it was a mid-year and we knew by then what they were on track to be, we could make a better judgment when we prepare the budget. But the department reports at the end of the year, neighborhood councils have their balance, and they tend to spend more money at the end of the year than they do in the beginning.
You know, one of the things, I think we've talked about this, Paul, that one of our, after we get through the elections, one of the major goals then is to begin to look at funding criteria and tracking. And so we need to really resolve that before next year's budget, so we all have a sense. We shouldn't, on the one hand, it's a lot of money. On the other hand, it is not that much money that we shouldn't be able to track. I mean, if we can track a $7 billion budget, we should be able to track what the neighborhood councils are spending and things of that nature.
And that, in some way, also dovetails with what the department has been trying to do with this E-platform. And we need to move forward on that in terms of an RFP, try to get a vendor in here, find out how that vehicle, that mechanism can provide the structure in which you have an accounting of funds by categories.
Now, that's something that the CLA and CAO are putting together a report on to evaluate it so that we can get moving if we should?
We're still waiting on information on what the consultant wrote up as to the details. As far as I understand, the E-platform as exists from the department, it facilitates the process on how they process the paperwork electronically. I'm not sure if that resolves some of the concerns I have, which is whether you process electronically, what's the amount? Is the amount correct?
So are you waiting for that information?
The department is supposed to be providing us the consultant's final report, and I believe there is a company they were in talks with. They had did some sort of cost estimate out of a plan with the details. We have yet to receive that as well.
Is that available, or are you waiting for them to finish their report?
No, the report is pretty much complete, and that mainly consists of a system design analysis, which gives, which lays out all of the key functions that the system needs to provide, both for the department as well as the city, controller, CAO, CLA, as well as neighborhood councils. So that's ready to go, and we could follow up immediately with the meeting with the...
As soon as that's done, we could get the evaluation.
Yes.
What's holding up that major project is that, and now that report that does the analysis. So if we can get a commitment to get that done pretty quickly, then we'll hold the CAO and the CLA's feet to the fire to evaluate it, and then we can move forward.
Yes, we can. And I just also wanted to talk about the rollover and encumbrance and the way that it affects neighborhood councils. Basically, neighborhood councils don't think like the city in terms of fiscal years. They just operate as if, you know, regardless of the fiscal year. So I think the challenge for us is making sure that we have, and I'm thinking that the E-platform is going to address a lot of the issues, because what we need is accurate data that's as real-time as possible. Because the way the city does year-end closing and then startup of new years, I think that's why the City Council eliminated the rollover policy, because the neighborhood councils were used to thinking in terms of multiple years and being able to use their funds. So now, what we have to do is create an accounting reconciliation system that is easy to use for neighborhood councils, but also gives you and the council people the information that we need in terms of how much was, you know, how much was not spent, how much was encumbered, and then of the encumbered amount, how much has been spent in the following fiscal year. And I believe that the E-platform will give us that data.
Well, you see, one of the things, I think, it's one of those things that everybody has their own system until it gets to the point of relying on funding coming. And I think the city's got to be in a position to where they don't fund unless they're satisfied with what happened the year before. Otherwise, you keep this cycle going where you don't quite get the reports, people don't quite pay attention to what's being requested. But the allocation is the hammer that makes sure that people do what they're asked to do. And I don't believe it's 100% on the department. You have 95 neighborhood councils that are responsible for maintaining their funds also. I would think that the department is responsible overseeing, evaluating, but not to be doing their day-to-day mechanics of the funds.
Right.
So there's got to be some responsibility at the neighborhood council level. It just can't be whiz-bang, "I got money, and I don't know where it's going, and I'm not going to, I can't tell you what I'm spending." That's not the system we're in. And although they may have a different view of the world, we all live within the city's budget structure.
Right.
And it's pretty difficult.
And to be fair, I think that, I don't want to pretend like the E-platform is going to solve all our problems, but it will solve one of the issues, which is that neighborhood councils don't really know how much money they have left, because we don't have a system that tells them that on a real-time basis. So this E-platform, the way that I have had the consultant lay it out, is that on our website, each neighborhood council, on any given day, will be able to see how much was their allocation, how much was paid, what's in process, and what's their remaining balance. Those are the four key pieces of information that they need to manage their funds responsibly.
I think the CAO and CLA believe that the, critical to this is input from the CAO's office, who is the budget office for the city, and the controller's office as to some of those elements that we express concern about. I mean, you know, we welcome sitting down and looking at it and saying, from our perspective, now you have, they have, the department has their perspective, the vendor has their input. I think we also need to be cognizant of how we craft this in a way that the city operates, how the city does its budgeting, how the city controls its money, how those monies are expended, appropriated, and monitored and reported, and eventually evaluated. So we welcome sitting down and saying, these are the things...
One of the things I would ask is maybe from the operational standpoint, that you get some of the neighborhood councils involved, because operationally, they may have input on how their systems work.
I think some of the treasures of the NCs have, in the past, provided very good insights into this process, and it'd probably be very welcome to have their, have that discussion.
Thank you very much. Let me just ask, to make sure I'm doing the right thing here. On item two, that's, I'm sorry, on item one, this is the report we've been waiting for that we want to get the council that talks about how the elections are going to be administered?
Actually, what we have suggested...
Actually, what we, we have suggested is that you combine both items, item one and two.
Item one and two.
The, the report addresses both of the items.
Okay. Now, the, the one thing I wanna, I wanna just clarify, the, the main report of telling everyone in a single document of how the elections will run is the report that's dated April the 12th. Do I want?
It's our-
The department prepared three reports. The April 12th has a good guideline of the election plan. The May 11th and June 4th reports from the department answer supplemental questions. The June 4th report has the election guide, the election handbook attached to it, and all of these documents are attached to this report.
Yeah, we wanna make sure all four of those reports go en masse.
Okay.
What we do, we try to make a compu-
Yes, so there's-
-pendium of the documents, as they can go.
We want-
One place, one play, on the website, and all stakeholders can review them.
We want one piece, one stack of paper that people can go through and figure out how the elections are gonna go. Okay? And then, on the report dated June, July 23rd, that deals with the, the issues of the funding, and there's three recommendations as it relates to looking at shared funding. One of your recommendations on item three is that we look into creating a shared cost plan for the 2014 election. And I just wanna add item, recommendation number four, that we implement the proposed cost-sharing recommendations of this joint report in the 2012 election cycle if there are shortfalls in the election process. All right. And from what I understand, there's $400,000 that's been put aside by the neighborhood councils for their outreach, and the city has put over $500,000 in its current year budget.
Yes.
That's close to a million dollars.
$445,000 for NC outreach and $550,000 for the elections.
So, then, that, that would be the-
Million dollars.
Add item four, recommendation four, that we would implement the recommendation for the cost-sharing for this cycle if we run into shortfall.
And maybe also a verbal motion that instruct the department to post this on their website for the-
Okay. The thing is, is that we should have all of this posted, the July 23rd report, in fact, the committee report that we are putting together, and then also the four or five reports that we've had miscellaneous questions and all that other can go en masse. And we have a placeholder in council. Can we do that?
Councilmember Parks, Richard Williams, City Clerk's office. We have a placeholder in council for item number two only, which is the reports from the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment relative to its implementation and expenditure plans for the elections. We don't have a placeholder for item number one.
Okay. That deals with the financial-
Right, which deals, item number one deals with the appropriate dollar amount for each neighborhood council to contribute towards the elections.
Okay. That could lag behind, but I'd like to make sure the placeholder has the entire package for the supplemental questions that were answered, the original report and all, what is it, four or five reports?
Yes. Well, there's three department reports and three attachments.
Okay. So, those, we wanna make sure that goes to the council as a package.
Okay. I can include the CAO's report with this item.
Yeah.
So, that all of that is in the package, when it's considered in council.
Would, would that be a problem on the item one, on the dealing with the shared cost of that going with the package?
Um, I-
And the four recommendations?
It's problematic to combine the two items, because there's recommendations relative to two separate issues.
Okay.
So, we could go ahead and send item one and two forward, with item two being placeholder tomorrow and heard in council. And then, item one regarding the expenditures, the appropriations for the neighborhood councils following next week.
Okay. And that's with the four recommendations?
Right, with the four recommendations, but that information can be included in the report for item number two.
Very good. Okay. We'll do that.
But-
And then, you'll make one committee report? Or is that gonna be two committee reports?
At this point, it would be two committee reports. And the recommendations for, what's before you for item number two is just the two neighborhood council, pardon me, the two neighborhood empowerment reports relative to its expenditure plans. That's, those are the only items that are before you on this item number two.
Okay. But I just wanna make sure, on the expenditure plan, is the entire election cycle?
Yes, that, that is part of it.
And with the accompanying supplemental report.
I will double-check to see if there's any way that these items can be combined and sent forward as one committee report.
Because I think if we separate them, it won't make a lot of sense. If we separate them, it won't make a lot of sense. I think they gotta go-
Together.
Yeah.
Okay. We will-
Whatever magic you have to do.
City Clerk's office will do what we can to make sure these go together as one committee report tomorrow.
Thank you very much. So, we will, with those instructions, we'll move item one and two with a placeholder for the election information, and if we can attach the financial information about the shared cost, we'll have that follow-up.
And for the Department Neighborhood Empowerment reports, did you want to note and file those?
The, well, we're gonna, we're gonna rece, what, receive and file them, because we just know, we just want them out as information.
Right. We could note and file them.
Note and file them, because there's no action we're asking on any of the reports. We just want them in people's hands, so if they need to use it as a reference, it's out on the website and it's available.
Correct. On both of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment reports, as far as I believe, there were no recommendations for action, so those were just for information only, so those could be noted and filed.
Okay. Very good.
And you're moving forward the recommendations of the joint report?
On the joint report, we're, we're moving forward with the amendment of adding recommendation four. All right. So, let's go to items four and five.
There's a three also. You, you want-
We're skipping that one.
You're skipping three and going to-
Yeah, just for a second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Item number four is consideration of an application to name a community Sherwood Forest. Application approved for filing on April 15th, 2011. Primary applicant, Ms. Pope. Item number five is consideration of an application to name a community Northridge. Application approved for filing on April 8th, 2011. Primary applicant, Estelle Goldman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate you taking up this, these, both these items in committee. The, these are for namings. One is moving from one area of this, of a community to another area of a community they feel more jointly aligned with, and the other is naming a community that's never been named before. And what makes Los Angeles unique is not just its sheer size, but the people in it and the different communities that make up LA, because you don't feel very connected. A lot of people in the San Fernando Valley don't even know that San Pedro, or the West Side, or even downtown is all part of Los Angeles. In fact, I recently went to speak at a, at an elementary school, and these were, these were young kids, and I asked them what city they lived in, and they said they lived in Chatsworth, or Porter Ranch, Northridge. And, and I said, "Well, do any of you live in the city of Los Angeles?" And not one hand went up, because they didn't realize that they lived in the city of LA. So, then I asked them, "If you call 911, do you know the name of the police department that responds?" And they all knew that. They said, "That's the Los Angeles Police Department." One little kid yelled out, "LAPD." Another one yelled out, "The POPO," but we don't, you know.
Oh.
But, in any event, what they did realize is that, that they live in Los Angeles after going through the discussion, but they felt very connected to their community. And no matter what your age, no matter what your culture, your background, your heritage, your religion, or the color of your skin, you feel very connected to the community that you were born and raised in, or that you live in, or that you're raising your family in. And so, here are folks that have gotten together, have gone door-to-door, not to separate themselves out from the, a community, but to be part of a community they feel they're part of. And so, I wanna applaud their efforts, because many times, this has been extremely controversial. This is, these are two examples that have, have been very positive and very welcomed by the neighbors and by the community. Oftentimes, we see that folks do it for the wrong reasons. We remember the fights just years ago with Van Nuys wanting to split up and being Valley Village, and then in real estate, when they would sell a home, they said they were, they lived in Van Nuys, they said they were Valley Village adjacent. And, and, and you got in all those kinds of fights, because you had the haves and the have-nots. These are two examples of folks that have really done a great job of reaching out and holding on to their entity and, and recognizing their community. So, I urge, I urge your support of this as a recommendation from the chair, and I say, I appreciate the committee for all their work on this as well.
Let me just, for the committee report, that we get just a couple of questions answered. Are these two recommendations, number four and five, supported by all of the affected neighborhood councils?
Yes.
Now, on four, what would be the primary neighborhood council?
The primary neighborhood, they should all be listed in the reports there.
We have, we have council northeast, Northridge east-
Northridge south for four.
Northridge south, okay. And then, on number five?
And, yeah, Northridge east would be number five.
So, that clearly understand it, we're actually talking about moving, changing the name of, from Northridge to a new name, but moving-
No.
Another community that we're now naming Northridge?
No. Northridge will stay Northridge. It's just an expansion of Northridge to include another community that's been in Northridge adjacent, if you will.
Okay, Nor, okay, I got you now.
And then, Sherwood Forest, which is a very unique community as well, and they've have one of the strongest homeowner associations in the San Fernando Valley, the Sherwood Forest Homeowner Association, which has been an icon in the community for many, many years, has never been named a community. So, it's an unnamed area right now of Los Angeles.
Now, one thing, has this been resolved? We have the North Hills West Neighborhood Council in October 2011 sending a letter in opposition. Have they resolved their-
Yes, that's been resolved.
And none of these change in boundaries overlap in other communities?
That's correct.
And let me ask, CLA, is this the first hearing we've had on either one of these?
And, Darrell Powell, CLA's office. On item number five, this is the first hearing that we're having, but I do believe that one of the neighborhood councils did conduct a meeting, and they had a hearing.
Okay. So, this is the first meeting that's for City Council Committee?
Yes.
And then, what about four?
Four, it would be the first, I believe.
First for a committee as well, yes.
Yeah, first for committee as well. But if you, if you understand the policy as written, the neighborhood councils conduct, can conduct hearings on a naming application, but it's up to them. It just think, the policy was written, just in case a neighborhood council does not co, does not conduct a hearing, the committee does conduct a hearing, which we're doing for item number four.
And then, is either one of these changes have any connection to historical significance, or is it just preference?
Both. And, and it's, it's both preference and historical, and, and going back to the community elements of it, with Sherwood Forest, that has been, historically, that's been an area that has been identified as Sherwood Forest for many, many years. It just hasn't done, been done so formally. And so, that does have significant historical reasons for it as well, and this is the same with Northridge.
Very good. I don't have any other questions, so we'll move items four and five with the recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Next item is three.
Item number three is consideration of application to name a community El Salvador Community Corridor. Application approved for filing on April 11th, 2011. Primary application, applicant, I'm sorry, Oscar Dominguez.
Okay. Let me just, is there a representative from the council office?
Did you want to go? Susan Wong of Councilmember Reyes's office.
A lot of cards are there.
Yes, I did. It's in there.
Okay, all right. Okay, go ahead.
The councilman is in support of the El Salvador Community Corridor. The designation would recognize the cultural and historic contributions of the El Salvadoran community in this area. The group has done extensive outreach in the area to groups and organizations, and they've gone through the process for, I would say, well over a year now, so we would hope for your recommendation for approval on this.
And you're-
He's the applicant.
I'm the applicant, council member. My name is Oscar Dominguez.
You're with the group's community, okay?
Right.
I just wanna make sure we get the council office first. Okay. So, you're through?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Now, Oscar, you, you initiated this, so why don't you start the presentation? But before you do, let me call up the other cards. Now, let me just say this, I know all of you are busy. If you rely on Oscar to carry your water, we can put your names in file, and the council office supports it. It's part of CD eight, and we support it. But if you just have to speak, I'll call you up, so.
I have a question.
What's that?
So, just trying to clarify, so District Eight will support it?
Did I say that?
No, no, no. I'm not-
I thought, sure, I said that.
What I'm asking you is this, if, if we, you know, the reason why you have so many of us-
But why don't you come up to the mic, 'cause that-
State your name.
You state your name, because that way you get you on the tape.
No, I can state your name.
Okay. You can ask me a question, okay? No, the CD eight does support it.
Oh, okay.
Because Oscar's already taken care of that.
Ana Saavedra, the only question I had was, obviously, you have a amount of people here that have been waiting, and we just wanna make sure that, you know, our petition is heard. Oscar is more than capable of speaking for all of us. That's all I wanted to-
No, no, I'm just saying, if you wanna speak-
Yes.
We'll call you up and speak. But at least two of the three council districts that are present, CD one and CD eight, say they support it. Oscar has, I think, made his round, so he could speak in behalf of you, we'll certainly allow him to do that. If anyone chooses to speak on their own, feel free to let me know. Otherwise, we'll put your names in file to show that you were here, and your name should be part of the file.
You clarify my question, so, thank you.
Oscar.
I definitely want one of our board directors to come up front, which is Nahun, which is one of our future leaders in the Salvadoran community. So, we have prepared something very short to be able to present, but first of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here. To all of you guys, it's been a journey for us for the last five years to work on this project. As you may know, you know, it's, it's, you know, council member, you've been one of our alliance for a long time to see the Salvadoran community grow. So, I will introduce, I'm gonna let Nahun just to give you briefly a presentation that we have.
Okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and I'll just go over briefly through the presentation that we have prepared, which is the one you have in front of you. This one, so, pretty much, this project is very important to us and to the Salvadoran community at large. We believe that it takes a village to create something great, and, and certainly here, the Salvadoran community has stepped, stepped up and, and support us in this project here. So, our vision as an organization is to promote our culture and enhance integration and involvement of our community in the city of Los Angeles. We plan to do this by increasing social and economic development within the corridor. And we envision to become a business development resource for existing and aspiring entrepreneurs and in, in order to promote economic development within that corridor. At the same time, establish and cultivate communication and collaborative relations with other communities in the city. Now, and then, kinda quickly go through that. Now, one interesting fact is that as, according to the sense, the US sense of 2010, we, the Salvadoran community has been, or was recognized as the third-largest Hispanic group in the US, making us the second-largest Hispanic group in California, of which the majority resides in Los Angeles. So, we see the need for us to have an area where we can promote our culture and, and help our people identify. We're proud to be American, but at the same time, we're also proud to be Salvadoran. Now, the Salvadoran, being that we're, you know, one of the largest groups in the Hispanic community, we play an important role socially, economically, and politically in, in the city of Los Angeles, so pretty much, that's one of the reasons. We also contribute to the economy, as you can see here. According to the Salvadoran Department of Foreign Affairs, Salvadorans contributed approximately with $39 billion.
Go on.
Okay. So, $39 billion to the US economy in 2007. So, we feel that by having this area, we're gonna contribute even more to, to this great city. Now, in the next page, you can see, I think this clearly paints a picture of this city because it's a melting pot. And you know, we just, just as other groups have had their, have established their area to promote their culture, we want to have the same, we want to go through the same process as well. And so being that Salvadorans are an important part of the city of Los Angeles, we would like to have a designated area to promote culture, grow economically as a community, and contribute even more to the city of Los Angeles. Now, where are we located? I think this has already been said, but we're located along Vermont between 11th and Adams Boulevard. And there are approximately 100 Salvadoran-owned businesses in the area. And that being said, we see the need for representation. On the next slide, you can see some of the activities that we have conducted as a, as an entity, as an organization. We, we continue to conduct cleanings along the corridor. We, we actively collaborate with and support the Los Angeles Police Department whenever they do activities as well, as well as other community-based organizations. And so that's a way to show community involvement. Now, on the next slide, we have also been involved in the community. We were part of the inauguration of the Monsignor Oscar A. Romero Square on Pico Boulevard in Vermont. We also promote our culture through festivals. And we expose our community also to arts. We have a cultural center along, in El Salvador Community Corridor, which is Cafe Cultural. And we, we have been holding art exhibitions, poetry readings. So we have been exposing our community. And that's the goal, to continue doing these activities to, you know, to, to raise awareness through, through arts and literacy as well. And. And pretty much we have also participated with other communities, such as the Korean community, other Central American communities, et cetera. So, and I just want to thank you very much for the opportunity to present this project, which for us is, is very important. And thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let me just ask, is there, in establishing this corridor, an expectation at some point to create a business bid or something, something in that regard?
Yes, definitely. We would love to create a bid, a business in front of the district within the corridor.
Now, also in that corridor, you said it's over 100 El Salvadoran businesses. Now, what is percentages of businesses in that corridor? Is it 50%? Is it over or is it the majority?
It's, I would say the majority are Salvadorans, even though there's other businesses with other, you know, communities.
So what we're going to do today is we will move this to council. Do we have any idea when this will get to council?
This would probably go to council next week.
All right. You can check with our office and we'll follow up. Or you can check with council file when this is scheduled. And we'll be looking forward to getting this in council. We've been waiting a long time. And so we hope that we can get that resolved. All those who didn't speak will have your cards in file. And so we'll make sure that it's recorded. So if anybody needs a note that they were here to when they go back home and their family wonders where they were, we'll put a little note on your pile.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all, Latell.
Is that it? We have no other cards, and so we adjourn.